Follow the meeting of the Delaware City Council to order and welcome to our two repeat visitors. They love coming here and being educated. You won't get any college credit for it, but it's gonna help you out in life. And welcome to anyone who might be watching on the web by the finance office of police call roll.
Bert?
Here.
Darren?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Garrett?
Here.
Hock?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Mayor Early?
Here. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We had the agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Bill to approve tonight's agenda is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both nay, motion is carried. Approval of the minutes from the November 20th meeting.
I make motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting on the November 20th.
Moved by Gary to approve minutes of November 20th, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Barry on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both nay, then motion is carried. Lance, Mayor has joined us, and do our visitors have anything they'd like to say? Okay, moving on. Next is the date for the public hearing on resolution 2017-20, which are the special assessment roles against the 10th Street project, both the special assessments and deferred special assessments. Justin?
Tonight's to be considered the public hearing to adopt resolution 2017-20, which is the 10th Street special assessment role. There is two special assessment roles included within. There is one, which is the assessment role that would be adopted by the council and sent directly to the county for collection. And the second role is a deferred assessment that was set up based on the agreements that the city entered into with the...
He's on?
Yes, he is, yes.
Yeah, this to the councils where Peter Rasmussen was going to come, but with the weather, he is on the phone there, so he's hearing what's being said. So you're aware of that.
So the second is for a deferred assessment, which is with property owners. This was agreed upon with the hospital, Sanford and Rasmussen property, that would, will not have the special assessment due until a time when those properties were, would be, would be developed. So this is laid out with the assessable amounts for each. Each of the property owners has been notified of the public hearing this evening and been provided with their special assessment, the proposed special assessments that are on this resolution of necessity. There, last week was contacted by one of the property owners affected by the project, Peter Rasmussen, and he was seeking clarification on specifically the areas of the deferred assessments on the Rasmussen property. And I believe Peter wants to address the council concerning that issue this evening. I have also spoken with Sanford Health this morning, or this afternoon, they had called, and they had questions about, specifically, what both of them are requesting is, so when the city entered into these agreements with the, with the property owners, the city had received notification of a Department of Transportation grant that we received, community access grant that we've received to complete the roadway. So you'll see within, within these, we have put a 38% deduct across the board on these, on these assessments per the agreements that we set up with, with the property owners in advance of, of moving forward with this project. Following the adoption of the assessment, or the resolution of necessity to move forward with this, and following putting the agreements in place, the city went, had our financing settled with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. With that funding, on the water side, we received 100% loan, which is all funds that have to be paid back to the DNR. And on the, on the clean water or sewer side of it, we received a 100% grant with no loans that would have to be paid back to the DNR. So both, both the Rasmessens and, and Sanford Health have sewer-related fees or costs associated with these assessments. And they are questioning if the city received 100% grant, what would be their, what would be their responsibility of having to pay something that the city is not having to pay ourselves? I don't know, Peter, did you want to address that? You're on my speakerphone, my iPhone, so please speak loudly.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the consideration from the council and folks gathered there that do allow us to be present by phone. My wife Joan is here also. We do appreciate not having to venture out in the weather tonight. So thank you, first of all, for accommodating us in this fashion. Second, I believe Justin's given a pretty good history of the project. Obviously, you know, we came to the agreement doing three for property owners in the city back in late February or early March of 2016. And then at the end of March of 2016, the city was also awarded this additional grant for work on the sewer side of the 10th Street project, as well as additional money on the Highway 115 project. So I guess what I am asking here is for consideration at this point, at least on the Rasmussen properties assessment. There is a on lot one, there is a total charge of $8,877.15 for the drainage and storm sewer. On lot two, there is a $9,652.79 assessment of that total amount. Thirty percent is obviously already deducted, so what we would be asking for is the assessment that remains after the initial law agreement, 38%, which will approximate $11,500. On the deferred assessments, as Jason had indicated, we've got two assessments, one for sanitary sewer hookup on the west side of our property, and one sanitary sewer hookup on the east side of the property. Together, those two cost about $24,326. So we'd be looking for additional deduct to cover the balance of that payment, which would be about $15,100. So total between the deferred sanitary sewer and the assessed storm sewer would be about $26,570.
Is that it, Peter?
That's it from my end of things. If there are questions about where I'm coming up with the numbers, I'd be happy to address those. But that's what, that's what we're asking for consideration for.
So provided with this request, I think Dean and I have had some conversations today, and, and we are both uncertain of, of exactly how to handle this. So I, I think what, what we're gonna need to do is, is try to flush this out amongst, amongst the council and amongst kind of the legal side of, of things on this. I guess we didn't anticipate this being, being an issue. I guess if, if it's possible, I think the council should ask, Peter, any questions that they have tonight? And then I think this, it might be necessary to, to not adopt this resolution tonight so we can explore this further. To make sure that, that we adopt this right. Because it, because we can't make any amendments to this. We actually, you can't make amendments, you have to adopt it as is. So we would have to republish the, we'll have to republish and go through a public hearing again.
So basically, we should, we can table it though, or we just don't accept it?
I think we...
If you don't accept it, if you make any changes, you have to come forward with a new assessment role, and then that has to be mailed out again. And I think our concern is with the ability to assess property that's covered by a grant. So in other words, Mr. Rasmussen's concern is if, you know, I guess to put it bluntly, he's saying if the city doesn't have to pay for it, why, why should I? So, and so we're kind of reviewing some of the case law to see if that is legal to assess for that.
And there's no, no pressure or there's no timelines here in terms of acting here, since this is, it would not appear until 2019 on tax...
Correct, this would be October 30th is the deadline on doing this, so it wouldn't be till next year. Now, the initial thought process on this, and I explained this to Peter on the phone, is that, is what I have in my recommendation. It's, I guess, I felt and thought that it was, it is, and we need to just check on this, that it's legal to assess, like Dean says, if we receive those grants. The way I view it is that there is real costs associated with extending those utility lines, and you're connecting those into, into a property, and that those real costs are assessable, regardless if the city does receive grant funds. Because how are you supposed to do that in the future? We don't receive grant funds for the next project, and those people are responsible for paying them. There's kind of a equity thing from, from year to year on this. And that, you know, developers have a responsibility to front the costs of developing property. Therefore, they should be responsible for paying the costs associated with extending these utilities and putting them into their property. Now that this has been brought up, I would like to have some time to check legally if we have the ability to do that. I just don't want to get, after having conversations with Dean, I just don't want to put the city in a position where, where we adopt this and then it ends up somewhere else later on, for legal reasons.
I agree, because we don't know if it's legal. I mean, absolutely.
And then if we look at that too, and I spoke to Lance, he was on the car on the way down here, and, you know, there may, there may be some shuffling of some of these other costs, the way we spread out the 38%. You know, that was, those were DOT costs, and the agreement was to spread those out on, on all the utilities, and that might be something that, that we also look at too. So some of these numbers may, may change kind of across the board.
For the other end of the process?
Yes. I mean, we, Lance and I, and Dean and I spent a lot of time getting these to the point where they are, and looked them over and really thought we, we have these calculated the right way. But in hindsight, I guess the legal side of it is something we didn't check on before we got to this point this evening.
So if there's consensus about deferring its action, I guess all we need to do, we do need a motion not to accept these tonight?
Table it?
No, well, nothing to do with it.
I don't think we know enough.
It just has to be acted on, because it's gonna be brought back up, back to square one, I guess, is basically.
Yes.
So we should have a motion to, to not accept the assessments, these assessment roles?
Yeah, I hate to say that.
Sounds like it's fine.
Yeah.
I hate to say that, but...
You looked at that today. If there's any amendment, you basically have to start from scratch anyways.
Well, we don't know if there's gonna be amendments, so couldn't we just table it until we know?
I think you can, I guess...
But then you'd have to come back, and I suppose we could have that as an agenda item before the next meeting, too, to deny and then be ready to adopt any one.
Yeah, if we decide to change it, then, then we'll have to recommend a new assessment, amend the assessment roles, and then notice a new hearing. So it'd be okay to table it for now, I think, but...
Entertainer motion.
I'll make a motion to table this.
Moved by Bob to table, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by James. Any other questions?
As far as interest and stuff like that, what's that gonna...
Well, that would be something, I would say we could have a discussion about that right now, so we know what we want to set that interest rate at. It's set at 8% according to this resolution.
Why?
That's historically what we've set the interest rates at.
Does it change with the market?
It, we don't really have a standard policy. So I guess we've just been doing, you know, I've done some checking for assessments in the last two, three years around the area, five, five to six percent is standard.
I think that'd be more acceptable, five, four. Four is the market, about five would be, be more. Eight is, the only reason any loan would be made for eight nowadays is if there was poor security or bad, yeah, a reason for... I could go on to call some, then there's no, there's no chance of that here because you got the, the whole property to have security.
Yep, yep.
There's a motion to table. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both nay?
Nay.
All right. The, we can continue the discussion, I guess, on interest rates, if you want to do that. Peter, this has been tabled, and we will be communicating here in the future. Probably after...
Thank you for your time this evening.
Yeah, prob, this is probably after the first of the year, I assume?
Before, we'd be able to have another public hearing.
Yeah, so, so, okay.
Very good, I'll wait to get the next communication then.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Bye-bye.
Bye. We had this discussion about the interest rate the other day concerning the southeast project, and about, you know, 5% seems to be more what they do, they do in other projects. And if, what's the prime, I don't know what the prime is.
Well, and you could do it also based on what, what the interest rate of your loan from the DNR would be.
Yeah.
Plus a percentage for administration.
Right, right. And they, they tend to run in a three and a half percent.
Three and a half.
So if you want, with five on, on these assessments. And we were talking before the councils, the meeting started, that the high interest rate is, I suspect, you can think of it as an incentive to people to, to think about paying it, paying it off as opposed to paying out the interest, you know.
People don't have the money.
Yeah.
So why should they be team-wise? If they're not in default, they're not, I can't see any reason to sharpen them.
But that's why I'm asking, the reason why, you know, how much interest it's gonna be over a period of time that we sit here without making a decision.
Their interest doesn't start until...
Until we close the loan.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So...
Even the deferred one.
Well, our interest, our interest...
Has started.
No.
Well...
Who pays the construction companies?
The DNR does, with our requests.
Right, but they get done, and they say, okay, we're done with everything we get to do. And then all of a sudden, they don't get a check.
No, then we pay them. They're fully paid.
They're paid, but we pay them and we're reimbursed.
So that's our interest.
Yes. And this loan doesn't close until after the Highway 115 project.
Okay.
Complicated.
Until after that, no, this is all, this, this, this project was tied in with the 115 project. And 115 project was supposed to happen this year, and it did not. So that project was completed until the end of next year.
And to put a dollar note on that or an interest rate, that's complicated.
So we carry this debt, we lower the interest, we carry this debt. If we have a, if people would pay off the loan, it reduces our debt, which means we could be holding, if we lower this interest rate down to 5% or whatever, you could be holding that paper for a number of years, and it prohibits the city possibly in the future of continuing on with the next two, three, and four phases, because we're carrying too much debt.
Because you're carrying that debt, right.
And so...
I think that's why there, that has been the reason for a higher interest rate, so the city isn't acting as a bank.
And I don't think the city should act as a bank, I mean, it's...
But there should be a timeframe on that.
There is.
They have 10 years.
10 years. 10 years, yeah.
So we carry that.
10 years, but I mean, 10 years should be left at that 8%.
10 years, what?
Should be left at that 8%.
That's what, that's what I feel. It's, we're not a bank, you know, we're trying to do this project, and we'd like to get as much of that as collective as we can. I realize some people probably can't. You know, a second mortgage on your home is probably in that four and a half percent range. I think we leave that interest rate alone and encourage the people that will get their own loan. If they can't, we'll carry it. But it's going to go against our debt capacity, and in the future, we're gonna look back and go, wow, it'd been nice to do this probably, but...
Is it, I don't, you know, create a big project on your part, but can we, maybe at the next meeting or down, or some idea, in the past, our assessments, how many, do we know how many of them get paid off upfront, how many of them we're still carrying? Do we have any, do we have a handle on that?
Yeah, um, some of it's...
I think 15th Street's probably the only outstanding...
Some of it's diving back into Leanne's stuff and figuring out how she, she graphed it all, but I can certainly try.
Well, just, I mean, just so we have some idea of what, like, you know, how much, how much are we sitting on in terms of debt? And then, and then if we can, you know, do a little bit more looking at the...
I can tell you, Fourth Street, most of what I have seen, they've been, they pay every, every year. And they're just coming up on their last year now. 15th and the detention is usually paid right away. So, but it just depends on the people, too.
Right, obviously. The one thing I would say about, and I guess I kind of agree with both arguments, with the, it's a timely discussion, because we have the Southeast Infrastructure Project meeting coming up this next Monday. And that's it, what I'm anticipating might, may be a question that comes up for property owners, is if we, if we pay this off over time, what would the interest rate be? My only thing would be, in order to help sell that project, so that, so that we can get people on board with it, that a lower interest rate on that project may be a way to, to sell that project. If we say 8% interest, people might, you know what their immediate reaction's gonna be? If we say 5% or 6% interest, it might be a little bit more accepted.
Well, what's the average assessment, would it be 5 miles a...
I'd say it's, if you're on a, if it's a standard lot, it's between 5 and 6, and if it's on a corner, it's, it's almost 12. It's about 12, yeah, because it's, it's half of the, of the long side. But it's all of the long side and half the short side. Right, right? Yeah.
All the short, half the long.
All the short and half the long. So it's double, in most cases. The, of the, so it goes from 6 to about 12, on average.
Over a 10-year period?
Over a 10-year period.
$6,000 assessment, and these people own their homes? You don't think most of them can pull a second on their home, or maybe even a first on their home?
Yeah, maybe.
Well, yeah, and, and, you know, we, you know, there, for every property owner that's in the southeast project, it's a different story. And I guess, and we need to be sensitive and cognizant of that situation at the same time. As Mark has stated, the city has got, got to make sure we're doing what we need to do, and, you know, we're not, we're not Wells Fargo or First National, so... But I think we can get, you know, to the correct numbers by, by continuing to, to look at this and discuss it and make it work, so...
How many on, on that southeast project?
150.
Okay, let's, we'll move on, old business. Ordinance number 849, which is the application for re-zoning the lot 9. This is the second reading and adoption.
This is continued, the second reading and adoption of the ordinance 849. This is a lot that is on First Street, just east of Clark Avenue. It's currently zoned, R1, single-family residential. It is in a floodplain, and the property owner has a, has a, has a notion to potentially construct a personal storage type building there. And you're not able to do that in an R1 without a residential structure being built prior to the accessory structure, which, which then leads to the request to, to want to do, or to request to have it rezoned to a general business district. It's important to note that in a floodplain, you are required, if you build a residential structure, to elevate that structure above the base flood elevation. In that area, that would be very difficult to do that. If you build a commercial type building, you're just required to flood-proof that building, so you use flood-proof material, green-treated lumber, have the pass-through floodgates installed in the building. So that is the reason for this individual's request.
Any questions? It's you, move to approve. Moved by Mark to approve ordinance 849, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gary, finding this opposite, please call a roll.
Bert?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Hock?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 849 is passed. Ordinance number 850, which is the 2017, right?
Yes.
2017 supplemental body ordinance, second reading.
So at the end of every year, it's necessary to go through and clarify through each department to look for any spending that was over what was budgeted in each of those departments. On the back of this ordinance is a list of those broken down into the specific reasons that those departments ended up going over their budgets. So the total is $73,700,000. And the sources of revenue that are used to back up those, those overs, those over-expenses are included on the sources of revenue in, in the budget. are, are included on the sources of revenue in, in the budget. Um, so with that, if the council has any questions about any of these specifics, we can answer that, answer them. Uh, with that, recommend approval of the second reading of ordinance eight fifty.
Any questions?
Mosquito head control.
Um, they budgeted a guess and they needed more chemical than what we thought.
In the future, um, I, I see that it's more, but, uh, is that enough?
Um, what you're seeing there is just the addition that it went over. Um, and a lot of times, I know the guys will, they'll look for sales, and if it's something that they can keep and use in the future, uh, we'll compensate supply, um, I think they do have a little bit left over too. Um, so they did try and watch out for the future as well, and, you know, if there's a big sale on something, they'll purchase a bunch of it and then it won't be as bad as it is here.
I was just asking, just to make sure that, I mean, I think that's, that's an important thing for any community around here, mosquito control with everything going on and West Nile.
A lot of it too, I think it depends on the year and what you're saying too, and, and sometimes they do just have to purchase.
Regardless, I mean, I think that that's an important thing and that's part of that.
Well, I, I think bottom line, they're gonna do what needs to be done and...
Yeah, when it comes, it goes over budget, they...
Plus the budget, that's, that's not gonna be an issue, I mean...
When they get bad, we, uh, you know, when we bought the second sprayer, so now we're able to get the whole town, town done in one night instead of having to go out two nights consecutively to do the whole town, so that's been helpful too.
Sure, I'm just making sure that it's all covered.
Right now, we got two mosquito protection right outside. Entertained a motion on ordinance eight fifty.
I'll make a motion on, for ordinance eight fifty.
Motion by Bob to approve ordinance eight five zero, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by James, and finance, finance officer, please call a roll.
Bert?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Orchard?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance eight fifty has been passed. New business, first thing is the two thousand eighteen, uh, service agreement with the Delaware Rapids Volunteer Fire Department.
Uh, attached in the packet is the, um, is the updated agreement. Nothing changes in this from previous years with the exception of the, of the dollar amount uh, that has been budgeted for the fire department in twenty eighteen. That number changes from forty-five, seven thirty-five to forty-eight thousand twenty-one dollars. Just the history of this for everyone is that in two thousand thirteen, the fire department, it, it, it was a city department prior to that, and they split off under their own nonprofit status, and, uh, the city has the service agreement in place uh, so that they will cover our fire protection in, in city limits. And, um, part of, part of this agreement was, uh, they took an ownership of all of the, of the vehicles and equipment, and, uh, the city had built that new structure, but, so they leased that structure, the ci- city still owns the fire department itself, the hall, and, um, they, and then they lease it back within this, within this agreement for, for zero dollars. So, um, there is, um, if you can see in here, there's mechanisms for them, uh, to receive their funding every year. Uh, this section five lays that out. So, we don't just hang them a track, they have to go through a process to receive that funding.
Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, approve.
Moved by Gary that we approved the, uh, service agreement with the fire department, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Garrett, any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. And that's Gary. Next is our two thousand eighteen agreement with the Sioux Falls Humane Society.
This agreement, um, great working relationship with this organization. They have not changed any, uh, of the, of the costs associated with, with this service. Uh, majority of these costs are, are borne by, uh, the, the individual that has an issue with their animal. The city ju- doesn't generally have to pay these costs. Um, those are mostly levied against the person who has the dog that's picked up and they end up warding it and they have to pay these fees. But, uh, this is the agreement that's in place for them to, to oversee our animal control in Delaware Rapids.
Any questions about animal control?
It's same exact, same exact amount, all the hourly rates are unchanged, this is the...
No hourly up here.
You know, the old one?
Couple times a month, probably.
I was curious how much.
They send, they send a monthly bill and they have, um, you know, what happened, when they were up here, um, and then they have, um, if an individual had to go down and pick up their animal, um, the payment on there as well was deducted from what we pay. If it actually is a stray and we do cover the cause and it's not that much, but...
It, it just depends on how much...
Rent time, I suppose, are here more, more?
Yeah, yeah, yep, absolutely. And, and then they, they help kind of deal with, like, if you have a vicious dog or, um, you know, barking dog situations, even though, they'll come up and and help deal with property owners and everything through this content.
But a dog that happens to get out for, whatever, an hour or so, or get away, they haul it down to Sioux Falls.
If it doesn't have a city tag.
If it does have a city tag.
If there's a city tag on it, they'll call us.
Right. And if you don't have the city tag because you don't wanna put it on, um, it may have an ownership collar on it, whatever, if it doesn't get called, it's hauled down there. So you're liable that you have to go down there and pick it up. And even if it's left down there, this is, 'cause I've got a prior experience, um, they've got kennel cough that they do not clean their facility. And any dog that goes down there, I had the vet tell me that, oh, your dog was at the humane society? Yes, it was. Well, we'll treat it for this because that's what it is, and they refuse to clean their facility, empty it out for five days, six days, whatever it takes, but, uh, so that puts the burden on anybody from town here, run all the way down to Sioux Falls, pick up their dog, even if they've lost it for an hour and it ran away, and it's ridiculous. I mean, run all the way down there, pay the fee, a hundred and thirty bucks, pitch dog back, haul it back up here, unless it has that tag on it from the city, but, just my rant, I mean...
That's why we have the tags though, so we can identify who the owner is and get it back to them, that's the purpose of the tag.
And also to verify vaccination restrictions.
How much were the tags again, I remember...
Five bucks.
They don't let us spend the five bucks to get the tag out?
Well, you get the vaccination from the vet, they give you tags, and you got a tag there, you got a tag here, you got twenty-five tags. Just my rant, that's all it is.
Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Bill to approve the contract, uh, with the Sioux Falls Humane Society for two thousand eighteen, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Nay.
Motion has carried. Next is ordinance eight fifty-one, uh, wastewater rate increase, and this is the first reading of this ordinance.
Uh, first reading of the, of wastewater rate increase, um, this would go into effect in the, on the, when you're, when you're using water in February, so it would be that March, March first billing. So, what this is, I, there's a history, I got trapped up in the, in the two pages on my, on the memo here, but there's a, put a history of what that rate increases have been since two thousand thirteen. Uh, what this is, uh, in twenty seventeen, the ci- the city implemented an eight dollar and sixty, uh, surcharge in order to pay, oh, I did something else. In order to pay the loan on the new wastewater treatment, so. And going into this, we knew that we, we wanted to phase in these wastewater treatment costs, so we did not implement the operation and maintenance, um, fee or, or rates that were gonna be necessary to operate the facility because we won't have the facility operating until the spring of twenty eighteen. So, uh, we knew this was coming, uh, this is a nine percent increase from where the rate currently is at. Um, and, and the way that this is laid out here, the, the minimum fee will increase ninety cents from sixteen dollars to sixteen dollars and ninety cents, and the, um, the per thousand gallon charge will increase from five dollars and six cents to five dollars and seventy-eight cents. So, you, you tack on the surcharge onto that, the increase total will be from forty-nine dollars and ninety cents for five thousand gallons a year to fifty-four dollars and forty cents. Uh, so that is an increase of, uh, was it four dollars and, um, fifty cents? Just to point out, when we were implementing that surcharge, you can see in the two thousand sixteen rate that the minimum fee was eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents, and we had decreased that in order to implement that surcharge fee, so this is kind of, uh, the minimum rate is in, is beginning to increase close to what those original minimum rate, rates were previously. This is anticipated that it will raise, um, a hundred thousand dollars, um, annually. That is what, working with D G R and working with, um, the D E and R, that's what we have estimated is what the operation and maintenance costs will be associated with this building. We're not gonna know those specifically until we get the thing up and running, and so we'll just have to analyze and, and work to adjust anything. If it's too much, we can lower it, if we need more, we may have to raise it a little more. So, um, that's what this, uh, increase is, does the council have any questions?
What's the average water usage per household?
The state uses five thousand gallons, that's why. And I would say that the average is under five thousand.
And you have that, that handout where it shows some of the other cities and stuff and rates. I'm, I'm just answering this to you, James, because I see where you're coming from on this, but, um, I see the water rates, um, if, if you're doing stuff like that, especially for rate rates and especially what we're doing up there, um, and if we want clean water, you're gonna pay for it, and if you're not, D N R is not gonna give you the incentives that we've been given, so.
I was just wondering.
I don't really care, I don't pretend, but I'm just wondering.
Right, right.
I'd say, I'd say the average is probably under five, I'd, three to four probably.
It's like, usually a little over four thousand, I don't think, it's, you know, it's always can be about the same, I guess.
It depends on if you've got four daughters in your house.
What's wrong, Gary?
It's a lot. My average is probably a little low.
Just feel like I did the little shrimp boy, shut that hot water off and I tell you what, you get out.
We, we had, uh, we're talking about wastewater here, we, we had the, uh, construction meeting twenty-eighth, and, uh, you know, everything is moving along pretty good out there, so, uh, you know, that's...
They're gonna be on schedule to have it fired up in the spring.
Yeah, so that's gonna be here before we know it, uh, in terms of the, uh, operation of the wastewater, people do it.
So we need a motion, yes?
Need a mo- mo- yeah, it's first reading of this ordinance, need an, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to, uh, the ordinance eight five one.
Moved by Gary to, uh, approve first reading of ordinance eight five one, I have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Garrett, any other question? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the motion is carried. Next, we have ordinance eight fifty-two, which is a first reading of an ordinance to increase the water rates.
In the budget for twenty eighteen, uh, there is included a three percent water rate increase. You know, there, uh, isn't like a sewer rate, uh, that we know we need to increase it for operation and maintenance. The three percent increase is to keep up with inflation and increase costs associated with operating the, the, the water across the board. Uh, so I would say that it's to keep up with inflation. It also is, uh, to also reflect to the D E and R on our, on our upcoming application that we're gonna be submitting to the D E and R, is to show them that we are increasing our rates on an annual basis, so that's what they recommend, uh, to keep up with, with the costs and to keep the rates where, uh, the D E and R sees that they need to be as an average across the state. Visiting with the D E and R, so we're gonna be going and applying for several million in funding for the Southeast Infrastructure Project in January. And the magic number to receive funding, uh, look, grant funding is, is forty-five dollars per five thousand. Right now, we are at, um, thirty-seven dollars and ten cents per five thousand gallons, and this three percent increase will get us at thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents, it's a dollar and ten cent increase per five thousand gallons. So it doesn't get us to that magic number of forty-five, um, to be able to see that, uh, to, to be able to see, uh, grant funding. Now, they will look at, they'll look at what, what our current cash balances are, they'll look at, um, what our rates are, and then they'll also look at what our rates will have to be in order to pay back the loan that, that we would receive. So, by the time we go in and, and they figure out that, um, whatever the loan and grant would be, um, I think that'll push us over forty-five for sure, um, in our water. But what this is doing is showing them that we are being, um, we're having forethought about this in, in, in bringing this, uh, this rate up, uh, prior to applying for the, for the loan, I guess, is, is the way I look at this. If that makes sense to everyone.
And this, you know, when we, again, the Southeast, uh, project, uh, when we have that meeting next week, uh, we will be talking to the citizens about, you know, this is a, you can look at it as a three-part project, there's water, there's the sewer, it's answered sewer, and then there's the streets and things incorporated with that, and, you know, we're, we'll be looking at trying to explain to people how all these things are funded differently, et cetera, et cetera, and, and the parts that they play in that, but I think I just wanna reinforce what Justin says in terms of, uh, uh, our dealings with the D E and R, and, uh, that they certainly are an important and a critical partner in making anything happen here in this community or any, in community in the state. And that, I believe they're very willing to work with us, but we have to be, we have to show them too that we are, uh, just, uh, willing just as much to work with them on, on these projects, and, uh, there'll be give and take, but we're, hopefully that'll get us there somewhat. Any other questions of Justin? I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, uh, ordinance eight fifty-two, the water rate increase, first reading.
Moved by Bob to approve first reading of ordinance eight fifty-two, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mark, any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, next we, if I find my agenda here, uh, the governor thinks everybody should be off on December twenty-sixth, Justin?
Yeah, it's the same, you guys have heard it, based on the personnel policy. This goes in front of the council for consideration.
I move to give them the day off.
James has moved that the city, uh, have December, uh, December twenty-sixth as a holiday. Is there a second to James's motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bob. Do we have any discussion?
If they, it's more than they have to work, they haven't been ever done, for double.
I believe that it is, it's, yes, it is.
In holiday time, it wasn't.
So.
Could you put an if in there?
That's reasonable, isn't it?
I mean.
Yeah, if you take.
I mean, if it's forecast, it's going to be forecast two days before. If it's forecast to be a blizzard on Christmas.
No, it's either, either, it's either a holiday or it's not, so that's, that's it, I think, so. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay.
Far? Zero. Sorry. Meyer?
Yeah.
Chris?
No.
Garrus?
No.
Ah?
No.
Orchard?
Yes.
Schmidt?
No.
Pam?
Five, no.
Five-three.
Yeah, okay. Motion does not pass. Claims payable. Who wants to, uh, pay the city's bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Moved by Bob that the city pays claims, claims payable. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion's carried. Administrator's report?
Uh, the attachment to packet was a letter that was sent to the, to each of the property owners for the southeast infrastructure project. Along with a breakdown of each of their properties. Myself and the mayor and, uh, Lance and Trent met last week and worked to flush out how we want to handle the meeting. What we, we're working on the agenda, um, about how, what points we want to emphasize and make at the meeting. Uh, the, the meeting's going to consist of six P M. to seven P M. Is a time when individuals can come and, uh, visit with myself, any council members that are present, uh, uh, and, and the engineers to ask questions specifically about their property or how about, uh, how the project's going to work. And then at seven P M., um, we'll have a presentation, or the mayor will give an introduction and explain, uh, how the council got to this point of, uh, wanting to pursue this project, um, kind of how we got there, and why we decided to start with this specific area. Um, and then really just to emphasize that we need their participation in this. The city, uh, the community as a whole is going to be making, um, an investment in this part of town um, with, with water rates, sewer rates, with general fund property taxes, and that we need them to, to also make an investment, um, in, in, in the front of their home with curb and sidewalk and other driveway approaches is what they're being assessed for. You know, I will go in and I'm going to explain the kind of the intricacies of the project with the help of DGR, as well as explain how the special assessment process works as well. Um, and then also how the funding of, of this, of these type of projects works too. So hopefully, we can get, um, a good turnout and get questions answered and see what kind of responses we get. We're going to try and get as mu- much contact information from people as we can, email addresses, phone numbers, all that kind of good stuff too. So, um.
I think, uh, the meeting is, uh, is very important. I think, uh, I would, uh, it's been posted, so, uh, if we, no worries about having a quorum there. I think if you, uh, are free and, and have the time to come to the meeting, I certainly appreciate that. I think, uh, I think everybody at this table is, is, supports, uh, this project, and I think the, uh, good showing by, by members of the council would be good at the meeting. And, and it provides the citizens more opportunity to visit with, with the people from the city. We, we, we want them to have that opportunity to visit with DGR about their own particular concerns and issues on their own property. Everybody has got their assessments and, uh, the, you know, worst-case scenario assessments in the mail. And then if you're in the presentation, as Justin has outlined, that we can, uh, uh, give them a broad overview of, of this project and, and then another opportunity to ask questions. And then, uh, you know, uh, we'll still be there after that part of the meeting to answer any questions that people might have. But I, I, this is a, obviously a significant step in, in the city of Dell Rapids. And, uh, if, I, I guess if you can be there, that would be great, so. Uh, it's, it's, um, you know. I guess, obviously, there's a lot, a lot riding on the meeting. Uh, we've, you know, got some minimal, uh, feedback, I think, already, you know, from people and, uh, some people who are in favor already, and, and when, I'm sure we'll find out more at the meeting a week from tonight, but, uh, but anyway, that's where we're at at that. And we'll, uh, as Justin said, we're working with Lance and Trent, and, uh, they will be there and, uh, uh, on, putting together, uh, the information and program that makes sense for the people, so.
I was going to also note that, uh, included in the, in the packet is the, uh, is the public hearing notice that went out for our next meeting. That will be the notice, uh, that's the public hearing for, um, approving, sending a, uh, approving, sending an application to the DENR for this project. It's for this project, um, and for the, uh, utility replacement underneath, uh, what was it, what was the, to, um, Clark Avenue and, um, state, state for the utilities. Actually, it was not Clark, it was, uh.
Yes, Clark.
Those are the two that closed, but it's the two in the middle that were.
Arlene and the else.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's those two. Along with, we, we've placed it in here, and we can have this discussion further at the next meeting. We also included the, the water on Sunset Avenue in the, in the, we had the woman that was here from Sunset. Um, that's, we know there's an issue there, so we can make a decision about, about actually including that in the project. We're just including it in the application. That doesn't mean that we have to do it, but we just wanted to put it in the application. So yes, uh, Monday night, December eleventh, at the St. Mary's Catholic Church Bridge Hall.
James, who's the other council member that?
Bob.
In the, in that, Mr. Garrus.
Are you guys in? Yeah, I applied to. I got a bill too.
Yeah, you're going to have questions.
I do.
For all these guys.
The last meeting, we had the discussion about, uh, we, we discussed approving the, the new DOT detour through town. Uh, and the question arose about the hall route from, from this last year and then the inspection of that. Uh, I had a gentleman from the DOT here last week. Um, him and Larry went through the project, and, um, you know, there's, there's some areas on south Garfield, south of the bridge, where there might have been some wheel wells that they didn't, they, they laid a, a level across, they weren't more than an eighth of an inch in, in any areas. And, you know, the response from the DOT is, our agreement was we would leave it, um, as it was. And so if you think about what it was before, um, we don't really have an argument after the DOT went and put the four-inch mat. The other area that, you know, may have been affected would have been Seventh Street, east of Garfield. And, uh, I talked with the DOT, and they are going to, uh, I said, I'm here, they would put this in the inspection report, uh, requesting a, they're going to put together a letter that, uh, states the number of vehicles that traveled on that during the hall, when it was a hall route, that we can, uh, include in an application for a grant when we go to do Seventh Street with this next project. The, the plan is to try and get a industrial park or, uh, road to market, uh, grant when we apply, or when we do the Seventh, Seventh Street to Third Street, the southeast infrastructure project, to, to get funding for that.
Would that go all the way out to the tracks or does it only go to Beach Avenue?
We're going all the way to the tracks with the project.
Right, will they?
And we would, we, we would do that because there's, there's, it'd go all the way out.
Right, then ground would do the whole, all, not just the truck route.
We would apply for all of that, yes.
Now that's.
Oh, it would just be Seventh Street. It would just be Seventh Street.
Right, out to the tracks.
Out to the tracks, yep.
Is, is the county having a responsibility? I mean, it's a county road.
Inside of city limits, inside of city limits.
It's not.
So where's the line? Is the tracks the line or is it?
I think it's right at, um, right at, um, right after the tracks, actually. Um, you can see where they stopped the oil when they, when they redid that.
So it would go past, uh, the concrete?
Did we go past the, the tracks on our plan? I think they said stop to basically, when? I don't think. Concrete onto the first track and then did an asphalt transition through the track to match on the. To match on. Decent asphalt that was on the east side of the tracks there. That, that's how we have it set up right now. We've got time to change it however you guys want to, so. We're going to have to do some work around those tracks, um, with trying to get some drainage and stuff to flow underneath them, so we're going to have to be doing some work over there.
But I mean, like, the concrete, the, was that coming from city water or is, are they in city limits or not?
Dell's Materials?
Dell's Materials, are they in city limits or aren't they?
Um, I, I, they are not.
So they're not, or they've got their own sewer and water then?
I, they, they are not connected to the city's system, no. There, the sewer doesn't run past, uh, doesn't run all the way to, what's the road, north and south there? Is that, that's like Dakota?
Yeah, it only goes up.
No, it only, it doesn't go to Prairie, it only goes to Beach. And after doing the rock profiles, the, out in that area is, is the worst. Beach Avenue, uh, Seventh, the table really comes up in that area. So it's not really feasible to extend the sewer rate further. So, um, with this, I guess what I was thinking was long-term strategy, getting DOT, um, a letter from the DOT that we can submit in a, in a letter when we apply for a grant associated with that. So it could be just kind of a feather in our cap when we go in and apply for those, for that grant. Uh, liquor license update, we've received all of the, of the paperwork and the license fees from everyone, uh, with the exception of, of the property taxes haven't been paid up to date.
These I looked again today, still have not paid their taxes for the year, so I'm, I have to hold it back. The rest of them have gone to the state to get their license.
So is the current license good until?
They're fine until January, no, until December thirty-first at midnight. And then if, if I don't get their license back from the state before then, they cannot be open any later than midnight.
January meeting calendar, I, we happen to have two holidays that fall on Mondays, both meetings. So both meetings in January will be, will be held on Tuesday. So, uh, that's January second and then January sixteen, both Tuesdays. And then, uh, included in the packet also was just a, another updated sales tax revenue report. We didn't have the, uh, October numbers into everybody last meeting, so, uh, those are still even really strong uh, in through the end of the year here so far. We'll see how November and December comes through. But they did go, they went over a million dollars in October. So the city budget's eight hundred and fifty thousand for our revenue, so that's all above what we've considered every time.
And, uh, remember here about two months ago, uh, the council passed a resolution uh, listing a number of, uh, issues and concerns, uh, that had been, uh, put together with a meeting with the Sioux Falls people and some of the leadership from the other, uh, communities in Minnehaha and Lake of Kansas, some items, uh, to bring to the attention of the legislature in this next session. And that resolution, we acted on that here. This Thursday morning, we have a, uh, meeting in Sioux Falls with the legislators. And I think it basically is to present the, uh, the list of concerns and have that discussion with them. And so we'll be doing it on Thursday morning.
Uh, speaking of meetings, let me bring this up to December fourteenth at seven P M. There is going to be a meeting at the Minnehaha County Commission, uh, chambers to discuss ambulance funding. Um, there's been a group that's been working on an ordinance and future funding, and so there's going to be a meeting to discuss that on, on December fourteenth at seven in the evening, if anybody is interested in attending.
That's all our business for tonight. Lance, uh, anything you want to throw in before we, uh, head out?
Nope.
Okay, appreciate, uh, that we had a good, good meeting with Lance and Trent about the southeast project and, uh, uh, so it, uh, uh, we got our, we got our work cut out and, uh, we've done some preliminary create, and, and agenda and items and whatever, and I passed that on to these guys. It's my, what I put together and we, this week, you know, working on that so that we're ready for next, uh, Monday night. Very minimal PowerPoint. We don't want to put people asleep. We, we agreed on that, minimal PowerPoint. So just a couple of the, maybe the, uh, one of the math, I suppose, and whatever. And there, and you guys will have some, some, uh, presentations. Mark got his presentation. There's nothing else, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Bob has, Bob has moved that we adjourn, and Mike has, uh, seconded Bob's illustrious motions. Uh, any other, now we can't have any discussion, all in favor, say a fucking thing out. Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it.